...that need to be addressed before we finalize something like this. The one thing that bothers me a little bit is each day a violation. I did talk to Ms. Harmer and I like the way she runs her office and I like the way she deals with problems. I think she's very sensitive to people's needs. But the ordinance is there, it says each day is a violation of separate offense and essentially could bankrupt somebody. And I know there are people out there that disagree with cities when we implemented an ordinance like this back in the 90s when I was on council last time. There are a lot of people who just think there's too much government intrusion. So it's just, it's complex and it's not a simple answer. And we got to stop decline in the subpar rental units in our city. And we gotta find a way to increase ownership. Where people own property, they take better care of it. But there are some secondary things about this that trouble me. And I've been thinking through this for days. I've talked to Mr. Brown, I've talked to Ms. Harmer. And I'm just at this point uncomfortable with its totality. And I would probably vote no at this point. And I still think we need to continue to be diligent to pursue this. I think Mr. Wine spoke today and I think we need to address this thing. But I think we're just maybe a little bit premature in our problem solving here. And I think we really need to address this in another manner. Not that the content is wrong and the intent is right, I agree with that. But this has some parts of it that are troubling to me. And I think at this point it's best interest to think this through just a little bit more.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Archibald.
Couple things. Let me start by saying I came here in full support of this. And after listening to everybody, I have to say I'm still in support of the idea, completely. I'd like to, one, clarify something and then I do have a couple of questions. The clarification is for those of you who came up and spoke regarding I have an existing rental and if I decide I want to sell it, it can't be a rental. If it's certified and it's up to code, you can sell it as a rental. It does not exclude you from selling that, it does not take away that permit. So that issue that the residents are concerned over, the landlords are concerned about, that's already been addressed in here. So that would not be a problem. There were however, a couple of things that came up that even sitting on the quiet of life, I admit, I did not think of. And they do go to, the first one would be, I think it was Betty that brought up, if a vacancy for three months, then you automatically lose your certificate. And I would think that maybe we would, maybe want to look at if it's vacant because it's being rehabilitated or upgrades are being made, in that case, then that issue would not be included in that. So that if, if I had a rental property and I decided that when a tenant moved out, I wanted to spend the next six months renovating it, making it that much better, I shouldn't lose my certificate, provided work is being done. So that was the one issue. The other is, would we be able to address something along that lines? I know that a lot of work has been put into the application for Port Huron Housing Commission and a lot of money coming into Port Huron for that senior project. And would that prevent that project from going on? And so I think maybe looking at if a project is already in the works and has already had those approvals so far, that we would want to make sure they could continue. And probably the biggest one that I admit I didn't think of was the loss downtown. I think we all agree that the loss downtown have been wonderful for downtown. I think we want to encourage everyone to continue to renovate the loss. So I would hate to see us do something there. I think, the only other comment I have on my behalf is that I believe it's not just finding out the crime and everything else that's going on in these rentals. And that's why I don't think it's just a three-month project. I think it takes six months to a year to find out what kind of impact does this have? What's gonna happen? Three months is not gonna tell you what has happened and if this has been successful in reducing rentals or changing the type of rentals we have. I think it gives us an opportunity to sit down and develop that plan that someone had mentioned. And how do we do this where we can control rental units? Still have them. We have great landlords, we have great tenants, in some cases, but we need to make sure that all of them are that way. So basically, those are my thoughts. And I just wanted to make sure we addressed those few issues that I heard tonight that I admit was something that was a little deeper than what we had gotten into when we talked about this issue.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
I don't want to get into mine yet, but I want to follow up on hers. I had the same question about the three months. If I'm reading this right, maybe legal counsel, that's only if you let the certificate expire, right? It's not. As long as you keep the certificate up to date, you can remodel in six months and, am I reading that right, or?
Yes, you are. Actually, the, if your certification is expired and you don't seek a renewal, and then it's expired for more than three months, then you would be covered by the 12-month moratorium as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I guess, as Congressman Sherry's position tonight too, where I came here and I was in full support of this, and I think there's definitely some questions that need to be answered. You know, as myself, as I am a renter here in Port Huron, and I've rented here for the last four or five years. And there's no question, we have a problem with some of the rentals that we have here in Port Huron. There's one specific landlord, when I was looking for a place to rent a couple of years ago, who told me just to show up, the door's unlocked. And I never went and looked at it, but I could tell you right there by then, I knew what kind of place it was gonna be because she doesn't even lock the door, just tells people to show up to come in there and look at it. However, I think that we also have a two-sided problem here. People are asking about the investors, what are we gonna do about the people that want to invest money in Port Huron? Well, what about the people that already have invested money in Port Huron? You know, somebody's buying a house for $10,000, $15,000, they're undercutting the landlords that we have already that are, you know, that paid $100,000 to $80,000 or whatever they spent on their house, and they can't compete with that. And some of these landlords are putting money back into their properties and are keeping up their properties. Now, I'll admit, my landlord's a good landlord. I'm lucky to have them as a landlord. It's not the best place in the world. It reminds me of something I would've lived in in college, but for me, it was what I was looking for. I'm not home much anyway. And some of the other problems I think we have here is, you know, like somebody mentioned about the duplexes and how's that gonna work for something like that where it is gonna be a rental? There's no question that was built to be a rental. And then the Housing Commission with the senior center, I had written that down before I came here tonight to ask questions about that. And then, so the other big thing we have too is a lot of people think Port Huron is the largest renter, or renter landlord in the city, where that's not true. The Housing Commission is a separate entity from the city of Port Huron and has been for a number of years. So actually, the city of Port Huron owns no rentals. But I think, you know, we also have to look at the landlords we have now, and I think that's a big question why I think we need to put this into place and go about doing it. Because these people have bought these houses, they paid a lot more than $10,000 or $15,000 because they've been doing it for years. And now you got somebody coming in from outside of Port Huron who's buying these for 10, 15 grand, maybe put $5,000, $6,000, maybe $10,000 into them and don't care what happens to them, unlike some of these other landlords. And I think that's, it's not just a one-sided issue for investors. I think you gotta look at every option that's out there.
Thank you. Would you want to speak now?
I have a question. I guess, in regard to what Mr. Lewandowski said about the Port Huron commission, housing commission not being run by the city, we appoint the people that run that. So I have to believe that's a quasi-governmental agency, isn't it? If we're the ones that appoint those people? I mean, to say the city doesn't own it, we're the ones that appoint the people that are on the commission, so isn't that the city of Port Huron, the landlord?
It is a separate entity, but you're right, it is a quasi-governmental entity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I'll make my presentation. First of all, I heard some interesting comments tonight. First time I've ever heard anybody speak publicly and feel sorry for an attorney not working. First time I heard an attorney come forward and say she was gonna be breached, it only took 38 seconds. I think she was correct. As to Mr. Garfield, Garcia, and his concern about the VIDOC at 24th Street, I'm sorry, he laughed, I'm very concerned about the safety there too. But as you know and we know, that's not in the jurisdiction of the city limits. It is a county and Port Huron Township, and we, nothing we can do there. But I'd be glad to go with Mr. Garcia to the county meeting or the township meeting and raise my concerns along with his about the safety issue there. As to Mr. Wine's comment about everybody running down and buying a, turning their house into a rental, you need to, if you take Mr. Wine's recommendation, you need to know your property taxes will go up 48% as soon as you're registered as a rental unit. And if you want to do that, feel free to do it. I would support anybody that wants to do that and pay more taxes. I also heard somebody say that the city is the biggest land, I would support, if we're gonna cut 20% rentals in the city, I would support that we cut the ones that the city has. And let the private industry take care of it, the city get out of housing. So I would support that. As to the new projects that were brought up by the Port Huron Housing Commission, I had a lot of questions about that, and I don't have a record here. I believe I voted no, and I don't think we should be building rentals in the city by the Port Huron Housing Commission or anybody else. And so if I didn't vote no, I should've. I truly believe there are a lot of questions here. And I'm a pro-capitalistic person, I'm pro-property rights. And on that side, I talked to Mr. Brown earlier, I don't support this. On the other hand, as a property owner in the city of Port Huron, and being a former renter and being a former landlord and not now, but I have concerns for the residential areas. And, so to be honest with you, which way I vote tonight, I won't, I don't know yet. But we're gonna vote on this one more time, so my phone number's in the book and anybody can call me and try to switch my vote from what it is tonight. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to look down to this end of the table now?
I could talk for a couple hours on this, but I won't. Just, maybe bring some levity in this. I know that the last election was brought forward and people said they were tired of controversy. Well, I think we live in controversial times, and I don't think there's anything we can do to eliminate controversy on this board. This issue swirls all around me personally. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, I am a former landlord, I used to own quite a few properties in town. Right now, the only one that I own is the home I live in, which is on Court Street between 8th and 9th, which is right about where we're talking about all this. In fact, Carol Cataldo came up and talked, she's gone. I live in the house that her, she raised her family in, with her husband. So I understand that. Erin and Rachel Cole, who came up and talked, we're backyard neighbors, the alley separates us. And the house that they live in and the house next door, we're actually two very dilapidated multifamily units that were torn down and a private investor came in and built two single-family homes. Ironically, Jeff Wine, who came up and talked, I believe he's the one who had that house listed and sold it. So it's, it just keeps going around and around. I live right in this neighborhood, I've got, when I look across the street, all the houses, only two are single-family or owner-occupied, the rest are all rentals. One of them, I think, is gonna go rental within the next six months. So on the block across from me, the block I look at, there'll be one owner-occupied house. My block, all the houses, right now, there's four owner-occupied houses. Luckily, one of the owners owns most of the rental properties and keeps them up. I wish my house looked so nice, as she keeps up her properties. There's, there's just so many sides to all this, this issue. And one thing that was brought up, people don't realize, water rates, landlords pay a hugely more rate than us property owners who are residentials, in that the ready-to-serv charge is charged on every single unit. So if you own a four-unit building, you're ready-to-serv charges four times what a single-family owner is. It's huge, the amount of property taxes and that they pay. Couple things I was disappointed on. One person who came up and talked, actually does not live in the city, but yet gave a city address. They gave their office address. So at least be honest when you come up here and talk to us. This ordinance, I think, is born out of the frustration of that we need to do something. Some rentals are out of control, or, actually, it's not the rentals, it's the blight issue in our community is out of control, and we need to do something. Unfortunately, I think we need to do the right thing, not just something. And it becomes very, very difficult. Just like former Mayor Moeller, I was very, very conflicted on this issue and in fact, was sitting absolutely balanced and not sure, balancing out what I see going on in my neighborhood of declining property values and some declining state of properties, and yet also talking about property rights and knowing what's gonna happen. If houses can't sell, we're just gonna have a massive amount of vacant houses. And we see what happens when houses are vacant. A house just three blocks from me was arsoned because it was vacant. We're seeing arson happening in the houses that are vacant out by the Blue Water Bridge Plaza expansion. But I'm so conflicted on this, and finally, it just came to me, I remembered of a radio play, a radio drama my kids listened to, and talked about the reasons people do things or the actions that people do. And really, there's four things. People may do the right things for the right reasons, they may do the right things for the wrong reasons, they could do the wrong thing for the right reasons, or ultimately, some people do the wrong thing for the wrong reasons. I understand the heart of this ordinance, I understand what's going on. But where I come down is that, and again, I live right in this, it's the wrong thing but for the right reasons. We're trying to control something, we're trying to get our handles on something, but I'm afraid we're opening ourselves up to a huge lawsuit over property rights and all. It wasn't brought up tonight, but we had conversations about an ordinance in East Lansing that's similar to this, but it's not similar to this. That passed through, they were sued and went through the courts, but that was actually voted on by the people, not by the council. I'm afraid that there might be a leg for people to stand on to sue the city, and quite frankly, I don't think we can afford that lawsuit. We need to get our hands around this issue, we need to control this somehow. But again, I think we're doing the right thing for the wrong reasons. Or the wrong thing for the right reasons. And there has to be, there has to be a better approach and a better way to do this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
Just probably about two weeks ago, I walked into Southend Kroger to buy some simply bread and milk. And about 50 minutes later, I walked out because a woman who lived over on 11th Street, where I grew up, and was my first home ownership after being married, took the time, and she's still in that neighborhood, to talk to me about how she felt like a prisoner in her own neighborhood and how the neighborhood has just deteriorated so much. And she cited a number of people that I was still familiar with who were still in that neighborhood. And she, she just talked about all the complaints of rentals in her. And she specified that there's some who are excellent in terms of tenants and excellent landlords. And then she, she gave any specific names of people she said pay no attention to anything at all on those properties. And I just walked out of there without bread and milk or whatever it was there for, just thinking, what, what do we do? What, what can you do? I mean, his heart went out to her. She's still there and she felt trapped, she can't sell her place, she takes care of it. And we're back to, as Jim said, this is just swirling around us. There are good people out there who take care of the properties. We need to have some kind of teeth and action to go after those people who aren't taking care of their properties. I don't feel as, in the short time I've been on the council, that we have that ability to do anything right now. Maybe that's the solution. I came here tonight thinking I'm in support of this resolution, and I think it is a dilemma. And I think I'm still in support of that, of this resolution, for the number of reasons. It's a tough call, but I think that's where I land right now. And again, as Brian said, we have another vote on this coming up yet. And that's an important fact for all of us to remember.
I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak, so I guess I'll speak before. If you have something else to say afterwards, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay? I have to agree with what's been said. Obviously, I came tonight to thinking, well, this is just something that we need to do and it is important, we do need to do it, we need to get back our neighborhoods. We heard a lot from everybody, and there were questions that were brought up. It is something where you are conflicted as to what is the right thing to do. The right thing, obviously, is to make our neighborhoods better for everyone that lives here. We don't want to hurt anybody in the process. There were a number of things that were brought up that I think do need to be addressed, and some of them have already been mentioned. I had a list here and several of them have already been mentioned. But I do believe that projects that are in the works, that besides not just talking about the Port Huron Housing Commission's project, but the real estate agent who said that there were a couple of deals on the table, and by the time you get your financing through and everything, it's not gonna happen before September 1st. Obviously, those are issues, issues about the loss, issues about a lot of different things. So at this point, I guess, obviously, we can vote for a first and second reading tonight if we want to do so, and it would be coming back for a third and final, which would be before us at the next council meeting, but would not necessarily have to be done then. But I guess I would ask that the administration, if there's a way you can bring us back some of those things that, to address the items that have brought in.
I would want to say, just generally, that one of the things we understood when we started working on this ordinance, is that we don't live in a perfect world and there were going to be situations that would arise that we would like to be able to meet, I think, deals in the process. Certainly, anything that's in the pipeline. Dave Wood's loss in the downtown area. There is a, there is an appeal process built into this ordinance to deal with those kinds of situations. So that's basically the answer to most of the questions. There's a lot of interesting thoughts that came up tonight that I think I would like to spend more time on, but I would not like to have this set aside while we address some of those things. But I think most of the objections are what-if, what-if, what-if. And I think we have a process in this ordinance to deal with the what-ifs and to continue to, I mean, I think we all understand and realize that rentals are a part of any community. I'm a renter, and pretty darn good one, I might add. But there are going to be situations that we need to address as we apply this ordinance. And I personally, I'm out a long ways on this ordinance, and I wouldn't be there if I wasn't convinced that this is something that we ought to do.
Councilmember Moeller, I think you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just have a, I don't want to put Sherry on the spot, but if you go to the last page of the ordinance, halfway down, number two, the Appeal Board. If the ordinance is adopted, I'm not sure, I'd like to see the chair, they probably like commission on there, I'd like to see the person that represents the council on there, because the three people there, the city residents have no, no input to them. The council member, they would have direct access to, and obviously, it puts heat on Sherry because she's on there, because obviously, if she doesn't do a good job, she may lose votes or whatever. But just a suggestion, I'm not making an amendment, I just want food for thought for people to think for the next two weeks if we pass it. But that way, the people have a direct contact with somebody that's elected representing them, instead of the three people we have on the Appeal Board or non-elected officials. Just food for thought.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I think we also need to remember just what the intent of this resolution is too. It's not to stop rental housing in Port Huron, it's to start saving neighborhoods that can fall into the rental housing collapse. My neighborhood's a perfect example, or example of it, down on Connor Street and North and South Street, where you have a lot of older people that have been in those houses for 50, 60 years. And, you know, sad to say, within the next 10, 10 or so years, they're gonna start dying, those houses are gonna go for sale, and a lot of their kids don't want to live down there, they live out of state. And those houses more than likely are gonna turn into rentals. And if you look at the map of the rentals that are over there, my neighborhood is one of the neighborhoods that have the least amount of rentals. And I think we want to keep our neighborhoods like that and try to transform them back into owner-occupied neighborhoods, but we don't want to let neighborhoods like mine fall off into, before it has a chance to even to get to recover from it.
Mayor Rep. One final comment. I guess for the public, I remain in support of this with those few issues being ironed out, but I liken this as, for the analogy of the Gulf oil spill, in that, as Jim said, we may be doing, which I don't believe, but part of it may be the wrong thing for the right reason. It's like a temporary fix that allows us the opportunity to stop that spill, if you will, and to then continue looking for the right thing for the right reason. But if we don't stop it while we're looking and while we're working on those things, it'll be so far beyond it, that 90% that somebody mentioned, it'll be too late. And so that's my biggest concern, is if we wait too long, when do we reach that tipping point that it's, no matter what we do, it's too late and we won't get the neighborhoods back?
I just want to answer a question that Mr. Wine brought up about a three-month moratorium. We, this is a 12-month moratorium, and we, the council can end it at any time with a simple vote. So if we're gonna have a moratorium at all, then we need to have it 12 months. And if we want to end it at three months, six months, or whatever, if the problem's been answered, we can do that. So, just to answer this question.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
Commend the city manager for putting the spotlight on this issue. I think it's, yes, I agree. Very timely, man.
I guess I do have one more question. When you talked about the Rental Appeals Board, and I guess just because I'd like to clarify it, in here, it talks about the Rental Appeals Board, unless I'm missing it, it just talks about hardships. And it specifies hardships, but it doesn't say anything about when you said, well, they can appeal for reasons of having a works-in-progress or the loss or any of that. I just would like to see that a little better defined, I think, as to what we're appealing, what are allowable appeals. I think we're opening ourselves up to a lot of interpretation otherwise. So I mean, we could still give it its first and second reading tonight, but when it comes back before us, again, I'd like to see that addressed a little better, I guess, if possible.
Mayor Rep, I guess my only complaint is, my only concern is, if you're gonna pass a law, the law ought to be right, and the glitches ought to be worked out of it before you go forward. And here we are going forward with this, and we're all realizing and acknowledging this thing's got some glitches in it, and they haven't been corrected yet. And that would be my caution.
Councilmember Fisher.
I can speak, being a long-term member here. There is, that's why we have the first and second reading and the third reading. That's why there's two readings for this. And that's why sometimes votes will change, depending on the various readings. Just somebody knows, I want this to continue forward, I want the discussion to continue forward. If it looks like this is in danger of failing, I am absolutely voting yes in favor of this so that the discussion can continue. But that's why, because it gives administration, different people, time to work things out, gives everybody a chance to say, just like Brian said, numbers in the book, or even on the city website, you know, feel free to call, feel free to email, whatever. And I'm very, very interested in to hear people and what they have to say, very much so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you. And if there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Let's make sure it goes, yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
That concludes our agenda. I do have a public notice that I have been asked to read. The city of Port Huron is in the process of designing the reconstruction of Water Street from 10th Street West to the city limits. This construction project is scheduled to begin in the spring of 2011. It is our intention to maintain access to local businesses and the boat-launch facility. Currently, Water Street is a four-lane street. To provide safe pedestrian access and comply with standards stated in the Americans with Disabilities Act, known as the ADA, and the Michigan Department of Transportation, the city is proposing to reconstruct Water Street as a three-lane road. The traffic study that was completed for this road has shown that a three-lane road section will reduce the number of accidents while maintaining the same level of service to the users. The city has scheduled meetings to give interested persons and groups an opportunity to provide comments and suggestions to help improve this roadway. The informational meeting to explain the project and to address your concerns, questions and concerns, will be held as follows. Tuesday, August 17, 2010, at the municipal office center in this room, the public meeting room. And the session times are 3:00 to 5:00, or 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Does anyone on council have anything else to bring?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
I would just like to bring to the council's attention and possibly have a private meeting, a closed session meeting. I guess food for thought, I don't know when the bid process is. But I know for years, we've talked about selling this building and the fall cutters for sale. And I think maybe we outbid on it and buy it and make that the new city building and sell this prime property on the river. It's at least something that we should look at. I don't know when the bid is gonna be, but if we can get the fall cutter building cheap and sell this prime property in the river for a private industry or something, then I'd go for it.
Mayor Rep. Yes, Councilmember Archibald.
Real quick, in the interest of time, there's a group of the human service organizations headed by the Community Action Agency putting on a poverty conference in September. On September 8th is the Poverty 101. This is a session for anyone who cares about those in our community who are in poverty, anyone who cares to help lift people out of poverty, who want to better understand how they can make an impact on improving the lives of those within our community. And I do have some flyers. We're bringing in a professional trainer, Dr. Donald Beagle, who is a national speaker on poverty.